All right, good morning. It is Monday, October 28th, 2019. I call the Department of Justice for the Order. Today we have Kevin Venker from Park Street. And this person will do the implications, but please stand and remain standing.
We're so thankful for this day that you made it to help us to rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you God for your servants gathered in this room and pray that you would empower them with your Spirit where those decisions are made and may they be according to your plan and in your will. We're helping us to love you with all our hearts, soul, mind, and strength. Help us more to love our neighbors as ourselves. Help us more to reach out with the grace that you've given us. Lord, I pray for our law enforcement officers, first responders, and those who stand in the gap daily for our safety, as you would protect them and watch over them. Bless every home represented here, may be a hailing of blessing and placing. We pray all this in Christ's name.
Amen. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, a pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, as usual, we have a request to skip something really fast. Bonnie Uhl, who was employed with the DA's office for eighteen years, passed away this last week. So her funeral is just going somewhere on the skip, the Reynolds, uh, Reynolds Island here, Reynolds, which is not to be that. Number nine.
Number eight.
Eight and nine, he has taken nine. Number eight says Regional Public Defender for Capital Cases in a Local Agreement. Consider an act of policy rule of this local agreement, Florida County, anticipated on a local program.
This is the same program, the same program, my college admissions program against, uh, having to go with the same thing on capital murder. So, uh, I've done through the contract, you've signed it pretty much as it's been in the past. We think it's forty-nine thousand, uh, things change. And, uh, the.
When was the other, just a matter of time, when was the last time we had a capital case?
Okay, uh, and this is for capital murder death penalty cases only. So, the last time they tried, they tried two in two thousand and five in the first two calls. And then, uh, both of those were as a patent lawyers. And then, uh, now, how was the thing, not the local lawyer? And then this came along and, uh, got into the planning, like, many of the counties around the state there. And we've had capital murders we've had, or the capital murder charge file because of the life sentence stuff. There's been only one other case since the one I just recently claimed with the death penalty case. We had one of them that I did back, and it was the victim was from shooting at the spot, only the people, three people from Breakwood and across the country, God came in there and one of them got shot, and then the spot hung. So I did the death penalty on that, and then wound up pleading to about five stack felonies, spending more, uh, and locked, locked up. So, there's lots of capital murders that happened, that were done, but that's the only one we would have done. And maybe we now got, currently got one, and that's how we figured out who was behind the ball and, um, we missed that. And maybe, um, it might be more than that.
Carrie, so the administrative fee of forty-nine, two oh six, do we pay that regardless of whether we activate this interlocal? And then where does that come in our budget? Is that our general, I know it's in general, but is that in our general judicial?
It is, because it's only on the.
And this is separate then, we used to put four hundred thousand aside for capital murder, or for capital cases in general, is that right?
I think it's in the judicial.
In the judicial, okay, thank you.
That one is there.
That one is there.
How about we instantly renew it? We hope we bring up a public data displaced for regional public defender programs.
Is that, before we vote, Randall, we used to have a person that was actually on staff here at the county, at the Senate table, is that, I know that person no longer around, but do we still have a person that works there?
Well, it's a group in office, there's several of the lawyers in there. Also, it's a two-year grant.
So we don't, there's no one actually here, Randall?
No.
Okay, there used to be, huh? I have them all working, I lost my mind.
When, uh, you're asking, we used to have an agency we called, talked to, talking about particular children, and we're not doing that. We don't represent that, I would say, so that's about the time I got the unit of duty.
Okay, okay. I'll have a motion in a second, all in favor. All right, number nine is the Bubbit McCain Institute, we consider an act of policy, we've got the McCain Institute initiative, we're going to hold it in his office, and we consider an act of policy, we've got the McCain Institute initiative, forty-seven, district attorney budget.
Uh, it's about eight weeks ago, so I kind of thought the Astro Commission would add on to investigator and prosecutor. They'll agree to do that, but this will follow up to the budget and agreement. And it's kind of, we want it to be in a three-year plan. So it's going to wind up passing. So right now, we have a budget figure for up to six months, and then, despite my efforts, I don't have a budget for three years. It's going to start back in September, March. The budget for, I'll go first, for March is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's going to help us get our, some of our equipment that we're going to need to get, to start working on getting our lawyers, that kind of stuff. And then, I guess, I want to kind of remember the three-year deal in March. But I've seen, I've seen the budget, the budget moving once, and just say that again, despite being completely asking.
So Randall, a couple of questions, if I may. So this is the presentation that I think Jason came to speak to, if I remember correctly, and he had a partner with him. I can't remember that nonprofit partner, I'm thinking the Bridge, but that may not be correct. He had someone coming to speak with him, do you remember who that partnership is?
Um, Gonzales.
I'm here this morning.
Oh, okay.
Oh, there you go.
Hi, I think there was a woman that spoke to us, Randy, and what organization is that, that's the piece I know?
Family Support Services.
Family Support Services, okay. A couple of questions on the, from the budget perspective. So the way this is written is saying that we will be the primary kind of owner for fifty-six counties, right? And so there are two positions, the prosecutor and investigator. The salaries, um, are obviously catching my attention because I know it's something you always kind of talk about, is the salary range, but if you say you can hire for this, I'm going to lean on your, your discernment. Can these two positions handle the fifty-six counties and the commitment for reporting?
If they can't, we can get help from the other people. And what's going to wind up happening, if say something happens, then, well, we'll just say something happens.
Okay.
This, this group up here is set to help prosecute those cases? I'm going to have to M O U with all the, for contract basically involving district attorneys across that fifty-six counties. We think of the same ways we're doing the PACT two, that same way we're doing the PACT two, so that we're all, this group will be able, the Bubbit McCain will be able to go to any county and assist the local district attorney to even take over the case, and that's what they want to do.
Okay, it's just fifty-six counties with those two positions, just the administrative part of coordinating fifty-six counties, sounds like two people to me, much less prosecuting them, but that's my own outside opinion.
The, I don't know, there's hotspots.
Okay, that's fair.
Like we've got to one with our General Police Department program, targeting the hotspots, they're targeting the hotspots. And so, it's a lot of territory. For human tra, for human trafficking, an investigator can get on the internet and start a case in thirty minutes, because there's plenty of stuff on the internet that they can do. For agricultural trafficking, it is a much more difficult process to have it wind up getting something to wind up in court. And the, it's not the process we have, it's the process of the people that involve these victims. Because they have a pretty dry stream of hope going on, because they have gotten visas to come over, they cannot go to person, all this kind of stuff, so they have to go through a very strange, so if somebody's playing by something, it's gone on. We have had some contacts that were successful in happening. A lot of time investigators got there, uh, they did, some of them had left that particular place, some of them were not interested in talking at all to be investigated. So that's the hurdles we've got to get over with the victims, and that, in my opinion, is not going to be hurting. We have, the program has outreach people who happen to have the division contact. And, well, we've got to figure out how we get past this hurdle. The outreach people, most of them are very Spanish, and that's what, and all investigators, not so much. I'd say, my guys still up, not so good for law enforcement. And we're coming from Mexico or other places where law enforcement's just not, they'll take care of, I mean, they don't trust their law enforcement. And, um, so to make that trust and that gap is going to be very difficult for us.
No, I mean, I think.
So I'm going to take that into consideration in regards to hiring spots.
Right, yeah, and so the, the vision is the human trafficking unit, but specifically what you're after is the labor trafficking and really getting your hands, you know, in that process around the agricultural, in the field.
Yes.
So this, these outreach positions that you're, you're talking about, where is that hub and who manages them?
Family Support Services.
Okay.
Family Support Services.
Okay.
It's got all that money, and, uh, they've been, they've been working.
Okay.
So has everybody, so has everybody played well with the law enforcement and the Family Support Services and now we can tell, uh, beginning to deal with agriculture, so that the outreach people are really going to all those farms and agricultural spots that they want to. And then, if they have people that are talking, just wish that the investigators to go talk to them. And that's going to be the difficult adventure being, when you first start doing, uh, getting, uh, what's considered law enforcement officer, all the people involved in the case, then, that goes back to where I just came from, I wouldn't talk to a police officer about anything. So that's kind of the same thing as having you.
So I just have two kind of callouts, you know, the funding is only through March thirty-first of twenty, uh, twenty, so they sometimes, what gets us in our budget process, you know, I think if we can, I'd like to asterisk or somehow make a footnote of when these positions are committed to, because I think when we get to the next budget cycle, we just forget, they get absorbed. We know with the revenue caps coming, we don't have that luxury, so I don't know if there's a way to do that in the budget, Carrie, to somehow help us keep track of that?
Because this is the very unusual funding for us, we thought we would put it all with the special element, so it's not even going to be to everybody.
Okay, and then the last thing I have, Randall, is it caught my attention, the, um, the ability to communicate. You're, you're not allowed to talk about this program, issue a press release, I even debated the fact that it was on our agenda without written permission from this organization. So I just, that's very different than programs we take on, and so obviously you have the media here often, they'll pull you aside and tell us what this new program is about. That was a very different clause, I've not seen, so I just want to make sure we know that as a governing body and.
They want, they want to know first.
Sure, I just want to make sure we're following that clause, because we don't see that differently for these type of requirements.
So, is Mr. Bubbit here?
Yeah.
Is he here today?
No, but he, but he's representing.
Okay, okay. This, this document right here, this is all covered in this plan, correct? Every, every penny.
Right.
Right, Carrie? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I just don't see a vehicle in here. Is the plan that they have, is it, did I miss the one?
Yeah, you did.
Okay, thank you. So are they using an existing vehicle? That's why the dollar amount didn't seem appropriate, nine thousand dollars for a vehicle.
It'll be a lease.
Does it through the enterprise, remember? Okay, thank you.
He's, he already has a vehicle, that's how he gets around back and forth from here down to, to, down to Texas. The best way to become a member of that.
And so if somebody suspects that this is going on, or if they just, if someone suspects that this is going on, if somebody's been missing this, used as a labor, do they contact your office?
I would say contact either my office or Family Support Services.
I think that's probably the, the matter, with people dealing with, because the confidence factor, that secure feeling, is not someone for law enforcement, that is, Family Support Services.
They contact this person, because my office is, my, really involved with this, Sheriff's Office, I hope it's going to be directly involved in this as well. Do you want to hear from Family Support Services a little?
Sure, if you have anything to share, love you there.
One quick thing I wanted to address was, uh, between the last version of the draft and this one, we went from a three-year budget to now something that might seem arbitrary, which is this April first cap. The reason for that has nothing to do with this particular partnership. We are, um, actually capping all our grants right now across the state, all seven grants that are out there, to April first, so that we can restart the clock clean across the board for three years' time. So, in a way, that's not working out better for this particular project, because we're, at, at one point, we talked about a three-year commitment, this will effectively be, uh, three, three and a half years when it's all said and done. That being said, it's a little bit more paperwork, uh, we are going through a change in, in fiscal sponsors, so it may not be Arizona State University, there is a new organization that is getting a status letter, uh, same team, same funders, same commitment, uh, but that, that might change a little between this cycle and the next. Uh, so there is that, that I wanted to, to make sure that we're all aware of.
And beyond the three-year committed, uh, window, and the, uh, the budget, the team, the collaboration is probably solid, which can continue beyond that.
Beyond three, yeah, the idea of the longer-term horizon, uh, the vision for this program is ten, and that would be renewable in three-year increments, but it's anybody's guess where it will be in three and a half years, I think, you know, we'll have another set of facts, and, and things could go one way or the other to that, but we are definitely all focused on getting at least that April first agreement lined up here in everyone.
I remember, um, reading some press on this, that this fairly new initiative, whether it was a county down in South Texas that adopted this in twenty nineteen, will you remind me of that county?
Hidalgo.
Hidalgo, so how are we cross-collaborating, maybe that's just implied, right? Since these are two fairly different initiatives on the opposite ends of the state, how are we looking across trends, kind of working along those lines?
We, they started, that's the question, they started, so they do, kind of, we've done, and then that's, we started small, make sure all the processes work and, and that we, as they can have that. Now they're, now they're comfortable in the process, and so now they can do, do the clock.
Right, but outside of picking the geographic locations, as organizations are kind of standing up, right, or do you have standing conference calls? Do you, you know, work across peer relationships, colleagues, to see what are you seeing down there, here's what we're seeing in our hotspot, like, what does that look like?
So for starters, we, they've had an opportunity to cross paths at the statewide table.
Okay.
There is a statewide task force that addresses this, and Hidalgo County is sending their specialty prosecutor to do that. Uh, so I know that when, uh, for example, Family Support Services, when they were there, they, they had a chance to meet, and then most recently, someone from, uh, Potter County District Attorney's Office would be able to defend a symposium in Washington, D.C., where Hidalgo County also had a representative. So that's sort of the start of the relationship, and I think things will really get going, and then you all have an opportunity to step up, and then, you know, it'll be up to those individuals to decide how often they want to chat, how to do that.
So just for the record, would you state your name and your real name?
Yeah, yes, Gonzalo Martinez, and I would, the Bubbit McCain, and if you can come down, I'll answer.
Thank you, thank you. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the Bubbit McCain Initiative, which is a dividend, first of the, the county office, and to approve the Bubbit McCain Initiative, initiative, by the State District Attorney's Office.
Motion in a second, all in favor, which is, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, go back to number one, approval of minutes. And that's nine, so two budget minutes, consider an act upon budget minutes. I have a question on one, county attorney deal, Scott here?
Yep.
Scott, would you explain this? Because if this is what I think of this, I could have sworn we said in budget time that we didn't know.
Well, what happened was in the interim, we got expanded to follow. Follow took over all of the salary, not only our DB prosecutor, but also our investigator.
They permanently took it over? They will always do it?
Assuming we get the grant, we can apply for some. So that's. So that essentially freed up that money. You say, oh, you say, um, so, uh, but the idea being, we have people who are. We wanted, we did want to get the investigator funded on that follow grant because that's the work she's doing. She's also essentially working as our victim assistance coordinator in the best of files cases. Because that is specialized work, she was saying. And so, uh, the idea being. We're reducing, if you allow us to, we discovered that we can reduce the hours and workload on receptionists so that that's an easier position to fill on the play-in play. And we had, we put more work on the other positions that reflected in the request. Press.
So Scott, you're saying the increase in salary line item is due to the increase in grant dollars? And you're allocating those?
That's correct. The idea is a zero budget amount. Again, it's due to the fact that we receive additional grants.
So should down the road, I don't know, when the 2020 census comes around, there's a possible undercount. Should those dollars go down, will we ever commit and the salary would go down to reflect that? It's a little bit of a reason.
We would make staffing changes that would maintain at least a ill effect on budget. Budgetary outlets.
So how many people are we giving a little bit extra money on the payback?
Uh, let's see, there are. Of course, the two who are grant funded are 2260.601 and 2260.727. The remainder, so there's two, there's six different positions. Two of them doing CPS, because of course, the idea there is whenever we can augment those flows, understand we may have to cut back with certain states. The nature of that work is such that it is difficult for me to retain high quality people. It's difficult work. It's really hard. And the same can be said for the compliance coordinator positions responsible for making sure that all our discovery goes out in compliance with the Warren Act. Rights heard on all of that, make sure that we're fulfilling our obligations to defense in terms of discovery and making all the information we have available.
So you have AB will total?
Yes, yes, that's what I, that's what I would think.
AB will sharing 65,000?
Yeah.
But not equally, yes?
No.
Well, I mean, other than it, you know, it's the precedence that it continues to set. So whether it's forfeiture dollars or grant dollars, you know, puts us a little bit in a bind. From Randall's perspective, when the DA made that move, we all felt that during budget. Grant dollars in my mind are a little different. And these are the kind of things I'm looking for some type of notes in our budget to somehow, a year from now, two years from now, let's say the census is an undercount. We know that's a driver to a lot of our grants, which is why I'm using that as an example. That we have some type of documentation that this is what we talked about. So three years from now, when we get back to the table, we're not left with the shortfall, right? We're leaking on you as an official.
When we submit our proposed budget, Carrie's been really good about helping us track which are grant funded positions, which are specialty funded.
Right.
Positions with grants or other sources of grant in our general county revenue funds. So it would be my intent to continue to abide by that tracking. For purposes of keep, for the purposes you're expressing.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Vouchers to consider an act upon approval of payment watchers process that we can not resolve. It's a 3009, after on 2014, 2019. Check number 187971, 2188160. And our transfer is 1041891, 21,100, $122.
Move to approve the vouchers and vouchers and become a judge. As in a discussion.
Second for discussion, two questions, Judge, page six of 19, check number 188041, 9,500. First, this looks like, on your end, the Bonfire Interactive, this online bid. Can you tell me a little bit about, is this a new subscription? Is this a renewal?
No, it's a new one. It's going to allow us to receive bids electronically rather than.
Did this come in at budget or below?
Below.
Thank you. And then the second question, page 15 of 19, check number 188131. This is just our Shaper mortuary for county cremation. So if this is a new vendor, I was just interested of how it's going. I'm not close enough to this particular line item. Does anyone know?
It's cool, okay. As far as budget goes, their rates are five, four, or 50,000 dollars for all of that budget.
So the rate?
I agree with the same speed, is that where it was?
Okay. Okay, thank you. I have a motion, second, all in favor. Carrie, tell us about payroll's on this one. Okay. Melan, is Melon still here?
He is.
Are you waiting? I know you're looking at me like, please stop talking, we gotta get over here. To consider an act upon supporting a joint primary election and joint primary runoff election. Between the both of them, doing great parties for the March 3rd, 2020 primary election and May 26th, 2020 primary runoff election. Good, got you. Okay. We would like for the primary elections in March and in May to be joint. And in order for that to happen, you have to have the elections administrator and the two party chairs integrated to that as well as the majority of the full commissioners court. So I'm here to ask you guys to support us in this. Dan Rogers is here from the Republican Party. Steve could not make it today from the Democratic Party, but they have both indicated their support for this being a joint primary.
And Melan, that's pretty traditional, is it not, to have the joint?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it's encouraged by the Secretary of State.
I make a motion that we approve the, supporting the joint primary election and the runoff election for the Republican and Democrat parties for the March 3rd, 2020 primary and May 26th, 2020 primary runoff.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number five, Treasury report to hear the following, the monthly Treasury report, the quarterly investment report, and to consider an act upon financial mortgage of companies Samuel A. Vaughn as a broker, and to consider an act upon 2020 investment policy.
And it's like, is there a relation? Should you be stating?
Okay, this morning at AMB, we have 3,535,248,19. And we're, this was just last week's rate, 2.10. I do look for that to be less. Tex Pool, we have 418,236,17. Earning 1.86. Tex Pool Prime, 12,727,363,6. Earning 2.03. And Texas. We have 6,925,506,70. Earning 2.04. Those are all just one weeks.
So on AMB, did you say 3.1, 3.5 million at 2.10?
Yes.
Okay.
And then our total then this morning cash is 23,601,354,85. So, um, let's just look at the investment report real quick. Once again, on page 30. You can kind of see for July, August, and September, our rates were slowly declining. It fluctuates daily, but for the most part, we are still slowly getting less, lower rates. But if you will, I'll move on to that page. Number 34 is a new account number, District Court Construction Fund. And so I want to bring that to your attention, that it will start. This is like a passive account or we pay that construction. And it's also listed on the next two pages for your descriptions. And then on page seven, because rates have been fluctuating, I just wanted to insert this. Make them all make forecasts or whatever you want to call it. That, you know, there has been certain things, things have come back and forth. But consumer spending is strong, manufacturing is weakening, but by contracting, the housing market is solid and employment outstanding. So the bottom line is. The present latency approach is why sustained, that they do feel like. That the rates have stabilized. So it is a good report. It's not kind of a panic yet, but we're trying to be very wise and it's just hard to predict. So with all that being said.
Two questions, if I may.
Oh, fine.
So the line item of the, uh, this is the document that I'm referring to. The line item for the Sheriff Abin. We took action last quarter to reconcile those dollars, kind of pay that, pay that downward debt. That line item will eventually go away, is that right? Okay, so we could expect that next, next quarter? Okay. And then on your recap of cash on hand, 12 million sitting in prime. And then three and a half at AMB, kind of on the lower end of. Our higher dollars are sitting on the lower end of the interest. Are we looking at shuffling this week or what's that plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I did meet with the investment committee. So one of the reasons I brought you the investment report, which is normally updated in May, but May was not a good time for us. And so by the time all that got done, and then legislation was going on, and there were still a couple of things after we weren't sure if it was going to change. And that's what would need to change in our investment policy. So by the time all that was said and done, I can present this investment policy and asking for you to approve it without changes this year. So that's the main thing you need to do. In that policy, the change would be to add an investment broker, Samuel Vaughn. And that's on the very last page of the investment policy is updating that.
Is there a reason we needed to add it?
There is. I'm still considering Fernando and, you know, been working in that area. But after talking to some other counties, I really would rather go with Samuel at this time just for references and different things we've talked about. When meeting with the investment committee, we've talked to, given a number set as to our cash that we have available and start laddering. And so the first phase, the first steps I want to do is broker CDs. And they're safer, it's, you know, it's just where I think we need to go right now with our market. So, um, that is the plan, and I want you to send us to do that.
So is that just kind of the general sense of what everyone feels about the market? Is at some point it will come down? So you're saying CDs are a little safer place to have our dollars anticipating that might happen?
Right. Well, it's, it's not just that it's safer. It gives us where we can diversify. And that's what I'm trying to. Give us better options, but safety is certainly my most, the largest concern over here.
Move to approve this 2020 investment policy and to add financial northwest companies Samuel Vaughn as a.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor. And Commissioner for the Record, no relations, is that right?
No.
Just thought it would be helpful to have.
Okay, and you now recognize the investment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Number six, insurance report. Anything?
There is one thing I'd like to bring your attention to on 1017. There is an adjustment of 913 payroll in the amount of 83165. And that's just where there was an error in reporting the payroll transfer for the 913 payroll. And so we had to make an adjustment.
Okay, okay. Hey, everyone's stabilizing on the new insurance coverage, the crossover?
We're getting there. We're still having some issues with the 90-day supply on the prescription bills. It's my understanding they have corrected it where we can get the 90-day supplies, but we're waiting to hear from them that they have made the adjustment to only charge two co-pays. So we're not, at this point, we haven't put out information to everybody that it's, it's okay to get your 90-day bills because the last work we had was they were charging three co-pays. So we're, we're waiting to hear back from them that they have got that corrected to only bill two co-pays.
Okay. And I will let the court know, since we did talk about this last time, on the urgent care situation, kind of lack of options that sit underneath our plans. So K has escalated that. And I think I'm scheduled to speak with someone to kind of talk through the network coverage. John?
John Huirwagen.
And, and what is he in terms of?
He's the vice president of sales, actually.
Okay, so I do, I am continuing that dialogue certainly so that we have quality urgent care options for our employees and I just, you know, obviously it's a personal experience. That as well as kind of our lower scale x-rays, just some basic x-rays. There's not a lot of options for our employees. So there you go to hospital, which is a higher deductible versus your co-pay if you can just get it in an outpatient setting.
Should be charged at 100, paid at 100% though regardless of where you go.
You're rendering provided regardless, okay. So I just want to report that back.
As long as you're in there.
Yes. As that continues, I'll make sure and keep the court fully informed.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, number seven, workers' compensation insurance. To consider an act upon renewing workers' compensation insurance for these taxes for the amount of 179,499 dollars, we're here with nothing for one. 29 zones reception for 30, 2020. This is the second year of a five-year guaranteed annual contribution. Steve also imposes a fee for fabricating as a county broker to be paid separately from the county. Good pass, Steve. Everybody?
I guess that if, last year, if you remember, we approved a five-year guarantee for the new DBs Texas Self-Control Fund. And that's a little bit different than what's happened in the past. We did, we came, we're coming off a three-year rate guarantee in the Texas political subdivisions. We've saved a number of, another rate guarantee. But the premium guarantee is much better than rate guarantee because the premium will stay constant for five years, even though our payroll or experience mod increases and if our payroll increases 2% a year for that period, it's going to be a $27,000 savings account. And we're going to increase it more obviously to save us more. And we have no risk, we have bad loss here as well. We've been averaging over the last nine years, about $137,000 in losses. With a high in 2013, 14, policy year, 420,000. And in 2011, we had 90,000. So that was a high and low in that period. So. And I, I don't know that there's any need for action since we approved a five-year deal last year. But we want to kind of report and make sure.
Steve, the only question I have is, I was thinking through the, the high loss year, the 2013, 2014.
Yeah.
I remember during that year, because it was just such a profound year, there was some type of facilities assessment where we were looking at how could people be, you know, injured on the job, what are trips and hazards and just really kind of one-on-one? I don't know if there's an opportu, I don't want to wait for another high claim year.
That's right.
Resurrect that document, check off everything's been done and there may be a new opportunity.
Every year, well, 1314 was bad. And that was bad workers' comp and bad property. We did so, you know, it was too. So 1314 was kind of an anomaly all the way around. But every year, the companies do a risk assessment, punitive, recommendations on loss assessment, loss mitigation.
Okay, and who does that go to at the county for actual action?
I think it goes to each department that they visit. If they visit to jail, maintenance, burn, bridge.
Okay, thank you.
Right, do we need to act on this or just say? Okay, so. Right, now regarding them. Pretend security training software purchase from I see to consider an act upon the purchase of security awareness training subscription for 525. To be purchased from Andrews and Associates by the best of the software.
This is for the online training. Interesting thing, Commissioner Church pointed out with House Bill 2054. In June of 2019, regulations passed so that certain government entities, including counties, have to have mandatory training. So I did check into what it would take for us to get our training certified. And we have until actually June of 2020, so my plan, we're actually also able to do a what's called a hybrid training permit. And that's what I intend to do, is to see training licenses along this. I went through the checklist, but the standard requiring the training is very basic. So this would just be a part of it.
I think the challenge is on that bill, there's only two vendors that are technically allowed to provide the training. That's what we're calling out Commissioner Church, if I remember correctly.
But, but we'll have the opportunity, we Andrews Associates will have the opportunities. This has been part of it.
Okay. And then Carrie, maybe this is just more of an accounting thing that I'm thinking through. Just the way our budget is written, that the funds come from Andrews and Associates. This is really county funds that are just in that budget line item, is that correct? Okay. I make a motion that we approve the purchase of security awareness training subscriptions for 520 grand users, funds budgeted.
I have a motion, and a second, all in favor. Are you going to do the actual report today too?
Sure.
All right.
I'll stand right up here. So nothing bad reported, everything good. The IT part did have a long one, 1332, 1000. One, one update that we didn't have before is IT also pulled out another piece of old equipment that had to be renewed, which is related to security.
And I saw this spill-in backup in the vouchers this time. Is that in process or already completed?
Still backup with this software.
This spill-in?
Group extraction?
Yes.
That's, that's in progress. We're actually waiting on the spill-in right now.
I know that's initiative you've been working on for a while, so it caught my attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 12, Potter County District Office, to hear updates.
Good morning. This is the opportunity to share Ag and natural resources updates in the county. It's been a year and I won't try to say too long about what we've been up to. But as you know, crops have been in trouble this year for all our ag producers with the great moisture that we really need, but it's kind of been coming at the wrong time. So that probably will have some effects on the economy for Ag in the area. And I hope that the farmers can get their crops out of the field soon. We did a crop tour this summer and a gardening workshop for citizens to kind of help them understand more about where their food comes from and agriculture in general in the county. We've got about a dozen kids going through our vet science program that I run. So that's great, helping to get some of that tech lesson soon. Couple other big things that are going to be happening for me. There were federal funds given across the state. And Potter County was chosen as one of the counties in need of some attention to wild hog eradication. So Potter Oldham were two of the kind of areas that were chosen. So we had involved in helping educate people that will be involved in that process. So we'll be hiring three staff through that grant to take care of the project. But we will be heavily involved in communication with the producers and the benefits that they gain from that grant. And I've also been asked to serve on our state hemp committee, Texas State. Is very interested in, in becoming a leader in the research side of growing hemp as an industrial product. industrial product. And, um, there's a lot to be learned there. We took a summer tour, uh, with a bunch of agents, this out in Colorado where they're currently growing it, and we know at this point it's a very, big challenge, uh, for us to roll out good research-based information about growing that crop. Um, and also, the last thing is I would like to, um, give some recognition to Commissioner Muria. Um, the VGY Institute, uh, county government has served with local governments in Texas for 50 years and, uh, Texas A&amp;M and Amerilla is a, a piece of that process. And, um, they offered the Commissioners Court Leadership Academy to further enhance professionalism and broaden knowledge and enrich the experience of county judges and commissioners in Texas. Commissioner Muria successfully completed twelve hours of training.
I know about the judge.
No, I mean, did you know you got this?
No, I did not know.
I'm going to give you the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. On this, uh, program, I've heard a very disturbing report, uh, on the CBD stuff and all that's going on, that we are moving a little bit too quick on this project, so.
I would agree with that. I'm going to reboot my Texas A&amp;M hat here for a moment and just tell you, I'm very concerned about this crop coming into our area. Uh, we do industrial hemp, um, is what we will be growing. And today, the only manufacturing facility really capable of handling that crop is for the oil production. And, um, the CBD levels can be very variable with heat and lack of moisture, which is a concern in this area. So again, we have a lot of research to do as an entity to help producers make good decisions. It's a very risky business, um, not insurable, not lending at this time in most states. Um, so it's a very risky crop.
Well, and then to echo some, uh, Commissioner Kelly's concerns, especially as you get into the research phase, and we're lucky that we have you here local, I would ask, or really kind of extend an olive branch, please keep us informed, especially during legislative session. I mean, we need to really be at the forefront of that, the picking up the phone and meeting and trying to really talk through what does that look like on a very local...
Today, we're at standard, the Department of Ag, Texas Department of Ag has been gathering and they're waiting on the federal department to come back with their response, so I'll definitely...
Uh, I'd be very concerned about funding the project on debt through our, through our county.
Okay.
So just, just bear that in mind when you want to give, for your education.
Appreciate that very, very much.
Thank you. Um, Judge, and we do have one opening, um, at the Extension Office, so Peyton has resigned. Um, so you'll start, you'll see that, but, you know, we were fully staffed for a little while there, so I'll let you know.
All right. Number 13, tiers number one, still need a sudden new board member on that, so I just want to know if anybody has any ideas. Now, Judge Jones, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No. I was just going to say to the court that since tiers one is not increasing three at all, um, I would hope that we can find someone who lives in some work close to them to be on the, I can find someone who's increasing, increasing three if that's what you want. But I want the opportunity for someone...
Yeah.
Well, I have served on that floor and, uh, I would consider doing that again if I need to.
Okay. Do you want to?
Yeah, yeah. I said it's a great board and, uh, yeah, I would be, be glad to get back.
All right, great. You're on it.
I make a motion.
I think we're going to have lots, it's time to move on.
I make a motion that we approve Commissioner Kelly to join the tiers number one board.
My second, oh, my candidate. I have a motion to say no.
I love staying.
Okay. Um, and Judge, just in terms of the administrative side, so Judge Thomas Jones will be coming down on tiers one and Commissioner Kelly's fulfilling that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Number 14, Potter Randall, President of District, to consider enacted upon the appointment of Lynn Cowley to the PRAD Board as a request for full group placement. Lynn, remember this morning?
I move that we approve Lynn Cowley to the PRAD Board.
Motion number 2 on favoration here. I think, thank you very much. Number 15, subdivision plant approval to consider for freehold subdivision plants made for ag producers, co-op number one, to the sole campus created in San Terre Control Eastland, and all public roads, Harold.
Morning. Morning. This is just a single lot plant. It was triggered by a 70 acre event. When it's co-op, when it's 70, it was required by Potter Randall, I can feel important with the plant property. So, during, during, and I'm just making it simple.
Let's give it a good listen.
Okay.
We have a legal description written here, I don't know what to say.
Yeah, I guess there it is. It's on the file.
It's very small.
On the big flat.
Right, right.
I didn't bring them. I hope they're painting something solid today.
And I'm assuming we've, um, at least had Roden Bridge look at it.
Yes.
See Sebastian here.
Okay.
Yes. Should be lower, uh, in order above my logo. This is a free year, green.
I move that we approve the class for blocks 33 and according to including the co-op producer unit number one and section 179, block nine.
Number 2.
Second.
I have a motion number 2 on favoration.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Number 16, tax abatement request to receive public comment upon and to consider enacted upon an application and proposed agreement for profit tax abatement under chapter 312, Texas Tax Over the Bowling Proposals Project, property owner, Emerald Economic Development Corporation, and applicant for tax abatement, both being under Fergie LLC and I Roll and Company. Investment tunnel number 10, anticipated equipment construction of 75,000 square foot meat production and processing facility and installation of big production and processing equipment and related facilities to the many cost of the two billion. Good morning.
Good morning. I should have the presentation up on your screen. Uh, first want to introduce, uh, myself, Kevin Carter, President and CEO of Emerald Economic Development Corporation. Then I have a few members of my team that I'd like to introduce as well. Doug Nelson, uh, Senior Vice President, uh, Reagan Hales, Vice President of Attraction, and then Michael Kitten, over in this corner, uh, uh, who is our Business Retention and Inspection Person. And then I'll introduce the folks that, uh, the project's adopted in just a few minutes. But, uh, appreciate the opportunity here this morning to, uh, to talk about, uh, I know in your, uh, investment reports, you talked about manufacturing being, um, uh, unpredictable and so this morning we're trying to help with that. So we've got, uh, we're, you know, introduce this project that would be 150 manufacturing jobs in Amarillo. The project is, uh, between Emerald Economic Development Corporation and SSI Foods and Bobina, um, group. SSI Foods LLC is a company, uh, that has been in business, uh, several years and they, uh, got out of the business and retired and their producers wanted them back and so, uh, they have come together with two other entities to form, uh, this group and to see about bringing the project to Amarillo. Uh, the other two principals in this are Gage Capital and Agro Beef. Agro Beef has 15 years of experience in the beef business and Gage Capital, um, is a Texas company and, um, the major principal Kirk Smith, who would be the President and CEO of SSI Foods, uh, and he is here with us today and I'll introduce him here in a minute. With this opportunity, SSI Foods would establish a manufacturing, uh, facility in, uh, the Centerport, uh, Business Park, uh, on a new portion of that. We've not used the portion that they would go into, that's across, uh, on the east side of, of Folsom Road on 24th Street. Uh, we have 104 acres over there and this, uh, project would go in the northern, northwestern part of that, uh, section, uh, 15 acre, or 17.1 acres with an option of 15 acres more. Would be the 75,000 square foot manufacturing facility, uh, with cold storage. Um, one of the reasons why they want to choose Amarillo, they, they do have, they are looking at two other sites, uh, in Idaho and Nevada. Um, why they think Amarillo would be a great place to be is its proximity to customers and suppliers, um, the, uh, taxing and finance options, um, that we have, and then we have a favorable workforce, uh, in food processing. Um, the project scope, as I said before, 75,000 square feet would be on 17.1 acres on our Centerport, uh, Business Park. It's $42 million in capital expenditures, uh, 19 million of that would be in the construction of the plant and 23 million of that would be in furniture, uh, fixtures and equipment, our main equipment, be 150 full-time jobs, uh, at the capacity. Uh, the proposal that, uh, the ADC, uh, the part that ADC would convey, we're conveying 17.1 acres, um, at our Centerpoint, Centerport, uh, Business Park with an option of 15, uh, more provided, more jobs are added. Um, we are, uh, asking this morning for a 10-year, 100% tax abatement on real and business personal property. Uh, the ADC is, uh, giving a $10,000 per job incentive for the 150 jobs. That's a hundred, uh, 1.5 million, uh, over a five-year period, so $300,000 incentive for every year for five years once they get to the 150, uh, uh, up to the 150 jobs. Um, 600,000, um, in land value on that 17.1 acres and then also, uh, we are building a new 1,200-foot road. Uh, I've got a construction cost of about $430,000 on that, uh, extending off of, uh, Folsom. Here are some of the impacts. Um, we use a company called Impact Data to, uh, to run these numbers of the economic benefit that would be for the county. These are over 20 years. Um, we, we feel that, uh, over the 20 years, the net benefit to the county would be $2.4 million in new tax, uh, revenue. Over 20 years, of course, the first 10 years would be abated. It would have some, uh, small, uh, taxes that would be gained through, uh, residents moving in and then also with the land value. Um, you can see the jobs that we, 150, uh, direct jobs and your manufacturing, food processing, that spin-off is at about a 3.05 rate of the jobs that spin off of that. So we're projected to increase, uh, 450 jobs that are indirect off of those 150 jobs. Uh, the direct salary, uh, over, uh, every year, 6.75 million, uh, in salary every year and the indirect, uh, salary associated with that would be 21 million, uh, in the spin-off jobs on those 150 jobs, um, at the 35,000, at the $32,000 rating. Of course, capital investment, 42 million. Um, we would see 21 relocations, uh, probably out of that, 21 new residents that would move to town or 21 new families. Uh, and then also, uh, out of that, 21 new families, 3.2 of those are projected to build a new house. And so you would see some new tax revenue that you did not, uh, have not realized before. Kind of the next sheet just kind of covers those, uh, numbers, uh, benefits, uh, 1.8 million in real property tax, furniture, fixture, equipment, uh, tax, 644, uh, new residential property taxes, that would be the new, uh, residential property tax on those 3.2 thousands, uh, over the 20 years, and then some of these taxes, if these, those residents would incur over that and also, uh, the business as well. The total property tax over the 20 years for that is 4.966 million. Um, if you abate the, the full 10 years, that would be a 2.441 abatement. Um, the net collection over 20 years for the county, just on the county portion of the, uh, property tax would be $2.5 million, uh, over 20 years. So that would be your 11.41, basically is what you agreed for the majority of that benefit. Um, I do want to introduce Kirk Smith, he's President and CEO of, uh, SSI Foods and Bobina Beef and so, Kirk. And I'll let you introduce your team as well.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to have you and discuss our proposal. But what I'd like to do is take a little bit of time and go into a little more depth, uh, of products here in Amarillo. But I'd like to introduce Ben Badiola, he's our VP of Operations, Randy Schuman, he's our in-house attorney, our, uh, engineer, his engineering facility. But having taken a step back, we've been working on this project for about two years and, uh, we sold our company in 2013 and, uh, at the request of a lot of our customers, uh, that's why we're back at the table. Sometimes they ask me, what are you doing, Smith? But anyway, the bottom line of it is, we started it two years ago. We looked at sites in Idaho, we, uh, Henderson, Nevada, went to Salt Lake City. And what we did is we moved further east, so we was, you know, our distribution would be wider at that stage. But we just got our bids in from, uh, for the construction last week. We had two companies bidding on it and there was a little bit of sticker shock. Uh, it came in about $267 a square foot to build this facility. And, uh, the last plant we built was in 2010 in Saginaw, Texas, and just put it in perspective, that cost was about $150 a square foot. So we kind of brought it all together. We've got a base of customers that have underwritten this project, but when the, you know, when you look at the equipment side of it as well as the building side of it and the cost, I like to make this thing work, uh, that's why we researched every opportunity that it helped that we needed to move this to reality. And so with that, uh, as Kevin said, we, uh, I'll answer any questions you have, but, uh, we do request a 100% payment of the taxes for...
For 10 years, is that the request?
Just me.
And Mr. Smith, so as, um, they mentioned there are two locations kind of being vetted, right? A Nevada location, is that what I heard? And then Amarillo?
Well, we've looked in Idaho, which is a little further north than that's where I'm from, and, uh, we looked Henderson, Nevada, and then in Salt Lake area.
Okay. Um, and I'm assuming by your commitment, obviously being here in presence, you're committed to Amarillo and, and this particular project. So I would like to think that you're leaning towards Amarillo is what I, I'm interpreting.
We would prefer to come down with that to Amarillo. And when we put our financial model together on this, you know, we baked into it about every opportunity we can to get help with this.
So a follow-up question, um, abatements for the county side. Um, I know you're slated, I think you're on the city agenda, I remember Friday.
And, and Amarillo College tomorrow night.
Tomorrow. So on the county side, um, we don't have many financial levers that we can pull, so abatements are an item that we obviously protect very, very, um, close to the county. It is our revenue stream in its entirety currently. So when we look at projects that are very, very large, even though these are large numbers certainly, um, like Bell Helicopter is a good example that I like to give to retain that employer here locally. Can you help me understand what this 10-year abatement would do for you as a company and your financials, right? Help me understand why those dollars matter to you trying to build this in here in Amarillo.
Okay, uh, probably a number of reasons. Number one, you know, uh, just a pure process of this project and we're having the finance to do it. And, uh, and then on top of it, you know, we've got a base student plan, we've got a spirit of customers that, that we'd like to do in conjunction with this project, add another building for, for the cookhouse. And, uh, and then anytime you start one of these plants, uh, you know, there's tremendous testing period there, you know, food safety, quality, et cetera, before you really get to the same ramp up. Then, you know, as I mentioned, I've got a base business, but, uh, we're going to get the road and try to secure some more business to build this facility up. And, you know, historically, uh, that's a tiny, consuming project. It usually takes you a couple of years plus you're going faster getting them, that's more important.
Just, you got one? Just a minute, so we can just talk about your product and, uh, you would actually be, uh, making, uh, sort of any sales for your product.
Yeah, all we do is, you know, like, historically, we bought in Dyson, uh, we got lunch today with that misses, we bought them in. All right. So we buy the raw materials that we need, we bring them into our facility and then we put it in the process. Those products go out into the, uh, food service arena, the food service. And so we've got some major customers, we make hamburger baddies for, uh, we cook, uh, steak paletas, chicken paletas, taco meat, things like that. But they're, they're typically... taco meat, things like that, but they're, they're typically, we haven't got a large number of customers, but we had customers that were baited, so efficiency is one of these plants.
So, your recap shows Hardee's and Burger King are what's presented to us, in terms of, they're your customers today, your big customers you're talking about.
Jack the Box, Burger King, Carl's Jr., and Hardee's, and then we've got the Taco Barn, Fourteen.
I'd like to say, thank you for looking at Amarillo on our day, and we really appreciate you coming here, visiting, former Idahoan too, welcome. But anyway, ten years sounds like a long time to a lot of people, ten years goes by really fast, and I think that oftentimes, people in the government like us, think that these taxes are our money, it's really your money, we're letting you use them for the next ten years, and after that, maybe we get more, but I think for our community and for everyone's sake, to bring in new business, to grow, it's a great thing, and so I hope we'll support this.
This falls in your precinct, is that right, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I would echo your comments, Commissioner, and I would say, I would just encourage us as court members to have the same spirit as we look into other precincts and other developments, as the dollar threshold might be different, right? We may have to look at different ways to incentivize builders to continue to come to the county.
I don't think this doesn't have anything to do with precinct, this was.
No, I'm just calling out just geographically where it sits in our county.
That we approve the application for tax abatement submitted by Marina Burger LLC and SISI Foods LLC for a ten-year period.
That at a hundred percent. Second, for a quick discussion, if I may, Judge, before we vote, kind of on the agreement, the proposal agreement, I just want to make sure there was language in here we had talked about during the last four, for A D C to come back and report, of, um, new jobs, I know that was a piece we were missing, just in our policy outside of this particular agreement.
Well, that's been added to our guidelines.
Okay.
We would decide along to the agreement, the city, what A D C is.
So, could we get a revised copy of those guidelines? I don't know that I've seen that yet.
Sure.
And I think personally, I know that you and I have talked, and I know the judge and I have talked, I would love to come and start doing a quarterly report for y'all, just like I do for the city, I think that's important to keep y'all informed. I've talked to Judge Haddashell about doing the same thing in Rambo County, and I would love to do that, and just, we just need to set that up on the panel here, and hopefully there's many more projects to talk to us, just this one. Obviously, we're here today about this one, but we certainly have been busy, and we certainly want to keep you guys informed about what we're doing as a county.
The only question I would have is, this additional building that you're going to do, would that also fall on a hundred percent of the, would that be?
Think that'd have to come back, that would be a new application, would be my.
Yes, if they expand the phase to Commissioner Kelly, that would be dependent upon jobs, job increase as well, it would come back at a different time.
Make sure we know what this is.
Uh, no, sir, it's not, it'll be a certain, it'll be a totally separate agreement.
Okay, have a motion in a second, I'll labor with you. About the Amarillo, before, thank you.
Is Kevin Freeman here?
Andrew.
Andrew, sorry.
Andrew, is there something on here I need to sign on, see where, where on here for me, is that true? I'll have you take a look at it, we'll continue on, okay?
If I, if I should, I, I just skipped out on saying thank you to Andrew, the city certainly has helped us with this area, with Rambo College, in the county of the county of the city, so I appreciate the collaboration that we have in the county of the city.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Number seventeen, resolution taxes and the digital defense commission is considering a resolution for the twenty twenty eight defense formula grant.
I make a motion to review the resolution for the twenty twenty digital defense formula grant program.
We need to continue to work with the state legislator to up that amount, because this doesn't.
If you did, would say.
Yeah.
At number eighteen, regulation of discharge of firearms, discussion only to hear discretion regarding section two thirty-five point zero two-two, the local government code, which authorizes county regulation or prohibition of discharge of firearms on lots of defense subdivision that are ten acres or smaller, and located in an incorporated area of the public county.
Hi, I'll explain the legal background first, and then the sheriff can talk about the actual whys of why we're here today, talking about this. As you may be aware, in Texas, guns are sort of the third rail with respect to government. That being said, there, there have been problems lately out in incorporated areas of the county, particularly with respect to what the sheriff will talk about in a moment. Now, I, I would preface what I'm going to say by saying, if, if court decides to act eventually and regulate or prohibit it, that has to be on a county-wide basis, we can't simply pick out one property and take it off the force. What the local government code tells us is that the county has no real authority to regulate sport shooting ranges. In fact, the, the code is pretty categorical about that, but it draws one minor exception with regard to property that's located in a subdivision. The court, the court may choose to either prohibit the discharge of firearms and airguns on a tract that is ten acres or less, or regulate the discharge of firearms on a tract that is ten acres or less, and that's what's before the court today, because that's really the only avenue that the county has to potentially address the questions that I will now allow the sheriff to subscribe to.
This has been an ongoing issue for several years now. There happens to be a gun range that's located over on Echo Street. You have to drive through a city property to get to the gun range, so I have my concerns on that, for one. The gun range itself is in the back part of the property, which is located in the county, so I don't know how that works, but anyway, I have to go back, and we get calls and complaints on it a lot, a lot of times we don't get anybody that wants to be contacted, who wants to not shoot, and more of a lot. I've got about eight reports that we've made over the last two years, and the concern is, is, is that we have stray bullets going out of that range that are hitting houses. One of them was a lady that was cleaning her car out there, and then they're calling us, she was coming, it comes. So, so my concern is, is, is that somebody's going to get hurt, and this, this particular range is located within a, really kind of a development within the county and the city both. I can tell you that I live within a mile from this place, and I can hear the shots from what you can hear in the shop, and that's a mile and a half, so the problem is, is like Scott says, the military does, it's more of a good effort, and there are a lot of people that live in the county, so they think, well, I've learned shooting guns, they want to shoot the gun, and I'm not here to restrict anybody with guns, and I'm a gun lover myself, but it's just the concern is, it's taking our place, and I'm afraid that somebody's going to get hurt.
Or there, or there are others besides the one that you speak of, many that, that could compromise the safety of residents in that.
It's the only, it's the only, really, the only range in the mouth of town that's open to the city.
How long has that, how long has that been open for, uh, sports?
About ten years.
Is anybody here representing the range?
We've had a meeting that was called several years ago, or when they first opened, the community that was around, big meeting, and he, the owner did show up, and that really didn't go anywhere, other than that they wanted to do something, the people that live out there can't, 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 to do something, and I, I understand that. It's just something that we need to be very well aware of, because I'm afraid that somebody's going to get hurt out there, and then it's going to come back on us, but we're going to do everything, but again, I understand that he's coming from the state, coming from that we are a good state, we lock our guns, and.
Are we authorized a gun range in this location anyway? Was it the county, or did they just put one in?
Again, we, we don't have any authority to authorize a gun range. The only thing we have an authority to do is to regulate firing of, shooting firearm, discharge of firearms or airguns on a tract that is ten acres or less in a subdivision. Of course, the idea there is not hard to get, when you're talking, ten acres is not a big tract of land, and when you're talking about a gun range, when, in a subdivision means there's going to be houses around, and so it's a safety issue, and that's the only specific carve-out where the county would have some ability to regulate with regard to a range wherever it's located outside the city.
And the little regulations we have in our county, we can't regulate a gun range being established in the county.
And I think part of the problem is with this particular range is, is that there's not a safety person or anything at the range when people go out there. You get a pass key, that's how you put in, so you can go out there anytime you want to, I think they do limited hours, you know, during daylight hours, but there's nobody that has to be there, so you just go up unlocked, you go out there and shoot, so, so that's what's happening, is we get some stray bullets that are coming out there, because people aren't shooting safely, so potentially anyone walking in that area or driving in that area, could be injured by, uh.
I'm worried about the people that are living there, but yeah. We know for sure it's a ten acre.
The entire tract is ten acres, including the part that's located inside the city.
Is that, is it in the ETA?
Based on the offerings or been at a surveyor.
Is it in the ETA, ETJ perimeter at all?
Yes, it is.
So, is there any, are there any jurisdictions there that we wouldn't normally have, like, is that an opportunity to look at something?
Well, we've ceded platting authority in the ETJ to the city, we did that back in the nineties. This authority isn't, isn't keyed to our ability to regulate the platting of a subdivision, it's, it's, it's simply a, an authority that can exist out with regard to anything that's located in a subdivision, and that's one requirement, it has, so if somebody buys a ten-acre tract way north of town, and it's not in subdivision, they can shoot.
But the danger that's, that you've expressed here, there's no, no way to shut this thing down.
Let me read to you from the local government code, section two thirty-six point zero zero two, the local government code, notwithstanding any other law, including chapter two fifty-one agriculture code, a county may not adopt or enforce regulations relating to the discharge of a firearm or airgun at a sport shooting range.
Why are we here?
Because it says that subsection A, which that I just read you, does not affect the authority of the county to regulate the discharge of firearms or airguns in accordance with section two thirty-five point zero two-two, which reads, notwithstanding section two thirty-six point oh oh two, see, this is why you have to have, right? A county may regulate the discharge of a firearm or airgun at an outdoor sport shooting range as provided by subchapter B, chapter two thirty-five, which in turn says, to promote the public safety, commissioners for the county by order may prohibit or otherwise regulate the discharge of firearms and airguns on lots that are ten acres or smaller and are located in the unincorporated area of the county in a subdivision.
So, why would we not do that? Why would we not enforce that ability if it's ten acres or smaller, there's not another venue like it, which I think is Commissioner Hahn's question, because you're not prohibiting the fact that people can go out in the county and shoot their guns, this is a specific sho, uh, shooting arena, why would you just not, why would you just not do it?
I mean, you're still going to get blowback from that.
Well, I mean, I think at this point.
There are other gun ranges.
True, the city has a, has a very nice shooting range.
I still do, that's what I'm saying.
So, what would happen if we did take this resolution or, or really enforce this particular subclause? Would this entity be grandfathered in? Would they be required to obliged by it? What does that look like?
Well, what I'll tell you is that the, that you have no vested property right to use property, in other words, you don't have a vested property right to freeze the regulatory environment of your property as it is when you own it. So, if you impose the liability, would that mean we wouldn't get sued? No, you know, all it takes is three hundred dollars of bad attitude, file a lawsuit, but the truism that I, when anybody asks me, can we get sued for this? The answer is always, sure you can. Now, will it be a successful lawsuit? I, I, I think we would have, we would have solid legal grounding, but we didn't put this on as an action item today.
Right.
We wanted to begin the conversation, I do think there's, uh, somebody here that lives out there who I wanted, we invited, give them an opportunity to, to let you know exactly what it's like for somebody who lives there.
Okay.
For our legal, as our legal rep, what are you going to recommend? That, well, let me put it this way, as your legal rep, my job is to tell you, can you do it, not should you do it? That's a policy decision that you have to make. I would say that whatever action you take, whether you decide to prohibit, whether you decide to regulate, or whether you decide to do nothing at all, those are all legally defensible positions, and we will work with you, once you've let us know where you want to go, we will work with you to draw up the best legally enforceable and defensible.
My biggest concern is what you're describing, Sheriff, that somebody is probably going to get killed, and that's going to come back to this county, allowing that to take place.
That, that's my concern, I mean, it's not, this is something that we've got to talk about, and Scott, I've talked about, places, and it just doesn't end on a day, and, and I'm just afraid that there's going to be something that's going to be tragic, and it happens, and, and like I said, this is nothing against the owners in the property or what they're doing, it's just the location is just, I mean, it's a wild place.
Is that the one out on Northwestern, you go way out on Northwestern?
No, that's, that's the Amarillo, this is where I, Amarillo, they're on twenty-two acres.
So, how quick, what can we regulate burning? We can't regulate.
So, how quick can we write this back to the court for action? I know it'll be into, there's no specific, like, thirty-day hearing window or anything like that. We would, we could have it on the next agenda if you wanted to, you know, I think probably we want to reach out to these, the owner of this property, allow him to come in and speak to the issue.
I want to hear from the residents.
Yeah.
Is there somebody here that wants to say anything, do you? Do you live out there? I mean, you ought to say something. Please tell me you were not the one watching your car when this, okay?
No, I am the one who initiated the group committee meeting all over a year ago, and that's the only thing, we showed up too, so we kind of had a hand spot to speak to the people that we had asked to come, you know, give their turn.
And you're in there by yourself, please?
Maybe, and long, you know, it's just to the west of the gun range, it's right behind my house, and I can see the, look through the buildings, and I hear all day, and it does go on after dark. When they attended the meeting, their response, when I asked them by, they would put, again, I use the residential area, because we own the property, that was their own, their own signs, and there are houses to the north and south of it, there are small children in those areas, people that I invited to the meeting, I just went around and passed out flyers, is how they became aware that we were one of their members involved in it.
So, after you knew that, after they, they stated that they own the property, and you shared, followed up with, yeah, but there are some individuals, people out there that could be injured, or, but I think that's what his response said.
There was, and one gentleman made the comment that, y'all live in the country, you're used to listening, you've got your car all the time, and that's not true, we have sit across the street with each other, and we clench up with each other.
Do you know if anybody's against?
Do you know if anybody that has, this lady that is, when it gets low and out, announces that, if any, file a lawsuit against this guy? That's a problem.
Not that, where I go.
Why not? That'd be a great start.
It's money.
$300?
That's the reason we.
Well, they're our lawyers. I love it.
We started to file a lawsuit that the cost was, me and two other gentlemen that live on the east side of the range, we started to file a lawsuit that the cost was just going to become astronomical, just to have someone come in and evaluate whether the range is within safety regulations. It was going to come down to around $20,000. And we just couldn't afford it. We were living a whole community up there.
So Judge, just reach out to owners and then as quick as possible, then that's, that's moving on.
Okay. So is there a sign there in there that says, "Slither, get back out of there"?
I'm just trying to think what. What an ordinance would say? Be just for gun ranges?
No, 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 we can't, we can't regulate gun ranges. What we can do is say that if you are in a subdivision and your lot is 10 acres or less, you may, either you may not discharge firearms or airguns, or it, or you could choose to say you can only do so within certain regulatory parameters. That's, that's all left up to you. This is, this, you have to take gun range out of it. This is just for 10 acre or smaller tracks that are in subdivisions. Everybody in our county would have to be. Yes, it would fly across the county.
And I'm thinking of one other range. I don't know that it's so much as open to the public as it is concealed carry. Actually, I know too. Now, whether they've been in the room or the, the 10 papers or less. I'm assuming they do.
We did some thumbnail research. For instance, because it applies to airguns, the paintball range would come into it, except it's located inside the city limits, so it would be subject to our regulation. The city's range is larger than, than the 10 acres. Emerald Gun Club is larger than 10 acres, so it would.
That's, that's the only drawback to Texas is there are people that are in the water and they want to go out.
But again, if, if they don't live in a subdivision, it would fly.
It's be within a subdivision.
Right.
That's correct.
Can you give me the younger one from the core? Can you tell me who this is?
And Scott, as a follow up, would you email us the clause that is, that is within our purview, that language you read at the end? I'd just like to read it again.
Sure. Sharon?
I do live in a subdivision, on a 10 acre track. And we, my husband does hire his pet and they've got a little place down at the back that they do some target practice just to keep his, his carry, you know, and stay in practice if he ever did have to use it. It's also used to shoot stray animals. I mean, we had a dog, we caught the barbed wire fence one time and we had to put it down. It was a neighbor's dog, but it was suffering, so it had to be taken care of. So I would just ask that y'all be very cognizant of others because there's more than just us out there that fire the gun, have a small target area they use on the 10 acres.
And just within 10 acres or less?
It's 10 acres and it's.
So if we do this, it would apply to you too?
Yes.
So is there any, Scott, is there any regulation that you can do just for that? Or if you said something about a regulation?
Right. The county can either prohibit shooting or regulate shooting on 10 acre or smaller tracks that are within subdivision.
So you could do some kind of a regulation due to the fact of the.
Right.
Constant, I mean.
Right.
Where it just.
We can help draft it, but I'd probably lean on the sheriff's department to help me figure out what's the safety. Obviously, the, the main concern is safety. And in order to reasonably address that without, I mean, duly burdening second member rights.
This, this shooting range.
Right.
This shooting range is kind of a.
They've lived down pretty deep. But we all know that we have accidents, charges, or somebody hired, you know, been around shooting all around and even police. We'll fire one up and over the bar and that's.
Fire one in my cafe downstairs.
Well.
We were talking about.
One of the difficulties we'll face, I'll tell you, talking to my colleagues around the state who have also had trouble with this issue, is several years ago, the NRA used published guidelines for the safe operation and management and construction of a shooting range. And because those were being used to challenge shooting ranges in their operation, the NRA quit doing that. So there is no, to my knowledge, definitive national guideline that can be relied on to say this shooting range is not up to standard.
Okay. We'll bring it back in two weeks. Okay. Number 18, equipment purchase, district clerk to consider an active upon purchase from judicial system, interactive mobile messaging system to purchase from judicial system, cost 15,000, 135,000. How do you want to get up and speak about this or back up if it's good enough?
It's, we're out the running and it's, it's working and so you'll be getting text messages or emails letting out if you report for jury duty or not report.
Okay. Go ahead. We're excited.
Ready for this, yourself?
Yeah. Can I need a?
I move we approve the purchase of judicial system, interactive mobile, the accident system, subject for 15,000, 335.
Do you think we have a motion in a second? All favor. Or equipment purchase, fire rescue to consider, and after the purchase, following items, funds to come from the cab. Number one, I mean, A is one, pre-core, A35, AMT motion truck. B is one, inspiring fitness machine with accessories. And then three is, I mean, C is three, indoor, mobile. So I want to help on these.
Hi, guys.
This is just what we discussed in our budget earlier. We come back, I don't know if we're looking at it, we're scaling a little bit more.
And this is going into the new station?
No, this is going into three other stations.
So this is fitness equipment to go into all three different stations? Is that right?
Yeah, one will be included in the construction of the building. This is going to be the updating, three, five, six. Current equipment that we have is going to be moved around and we changed some of the equipment and we're going to get some outside help string. So.
Moving to the third, the following equipment, A, B, and C is noted.
I'm assuming on the second.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Number 21, our county project, Nicholas.
I have a thing to ask you.
I know. Just a week demolition project. I'm assuming that's all done and taken care of and cleaned up?
I think it's cleaned up.
It's okay.
If, if, if cleaning is done, the building, the building is first, part of it is still down, but nothing, under, nothing stored or, or to have this.
It might be nice as we start a new fiscal year to have maybe just a running list of projects in motion for this year. That would be helpful, like a helpful handout that I might just keep on my own too.
So we had a little problem with ice coming off the center.
Yeah.
And one person up.
Well, yes, I think one of them made a report. It made a.
Yeah, ice, all the snow, the ice started coming off the center.
And that just.
That's all stuff.
Whether maybe there's safety really, so they, you know, back and maybe think about ice. So we're doing the leg just all the way up and just looking for it, just coming off. People would stop and watch it. And this gentleman came in, did his business and left. He wasn't looking up, he's shaking his head, kind of.
Nature, we can't help it.
No, we can't, but we walked it off and did our best.
Along those lines, because of the nature of that building, when we do have storms like that, which I know we're anticipating another one this week, does it, you know, will move us to put some signs out there? So, I mean, I'm thinking more of the traffic that people are going into the tax assessment office, so the people I'm thinking of usually.
Since that's the only door we have open.
But just to make it, you know, be aware.
Some falling rocks, falling.
Falling snow. I mean, people are usually looking line of sight. I would probably be the same one. I wouldn't be looking up. I would be looking right. I just.
What we did is we put cones, walk off the whole size walk and give them.
Yeah, area.
Probably the largest. We can get, we can get signs that says.
Crawling ice. You, just, you know, whatever you think is appropriate. It just might be worth the extra steps, especially. What about the project in front of the state building, that landscaping project? I think Custom Gardens had that one.
That's beautiful. It's really good, Nicholas.
Thank you.
While you think it was on the signs, should we put practices? If you get hit, it just takes $300 of bad.
Yes.
But forget it because we warned you.
All right. Number 42, show report. We have 537 people and there are now 86 are females. No one is farmed out. 86% fell on this, 7% is to be monitored. Any county insurance?
I just want, we had a.
Falling ice.
No, I didn't know.
I haven't seen those in some reports yet.
We have a squad that was out there and asked, so we're hoping we can just kind of turn around and.
His squad.
Squad.
Out of vehicle.
I have a squad, we have a first squad.
We'll be strong out there.
Vehicle, I mean, at this point, what, what, what do we do other than, do they have to go through extra training? Is there something that happens? Or we just continue to take the claims? What does that look like to help these types of stories? I'm just asking the question.
We do some discipline with your department.
County policy provides, and of course, it's going to be up to the county policy does provide that if there's an accident involving a vehicle or a vehicle that, depending on the circumstances, the testing may be available to see or to operating a vehicle under influence of alcohol or drugs. And then of course, as the sheriff noted, we do, if the circumstances be, engage in remedial training.
All right. 24, a second discussion there is, um, just the items for next time. Just happy you'll send us that follow up. Nothing else, we all adjourned. Thank you very much.